There we go. So I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have quite a few guests on tonight, but are there any public comments before we move on with the agenda? Let's see, Marty is coming in. There we go. So any public comments? And I don't think we have anybody except our invited guests. So we'll move on to correspondence. I don't think we have anything.
We don't have any correspondence.
All right. First Electman's report. I have a couple of things to cover tonight. First of all, as my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen may or may not know, Laura Visseal, our Director of Health, was selected by the Bethel Public School System to receive the Champ Award this year as the most influential person in our town with positive influence over our schoolchildren. And this is directly related to her work in operating the clinic to vaccinate the teachers, the staff, all the custodians, everybody related with the education system. And as you know, I know that I've seen my colleagues at the clinic. Bethel ran one of the finest, most well organized clinics, vaccination clinics in the state of Connecticut. And we owe a very big debt of gratitude to Laura, as well as to Tom Galliford, who assisted on his side of the fence. Lisa Plum, members of the staff of the Senior Center, many of the teachers, the principals, all chipped in to make this an extremely smoothly run operation. But Laura really deserves the credit for the organization and the months of background work that she did to get permitted by the state of Connecticut to obtain the vaccines. And I can tell you, we had zero waste in our system. It was so well run, the appointments were so well organized that we didn't lose, we didn't have to toss out a single dose of that valuable vaccine. So last Friday, April 30th, was the last day for first doses of the vaccine with the clinic. Our clinic will remain open to the fourth week of May to give the second doses, and then it will be shut down because, as you're probably aware from from recent press reports, the vaccine is now available through a very, quite easily, as a matter of fact, through a wide variety of outlets, including local pharmacies, the Community Health Center in Danbury, the drive-through they have at the mall, Danbury Hospital, and other private clinics in the area. And I understand that the wait is dropping for vaccines, and it's much easier to schedule your own appointment and get it done that way. It's actually gotten to the point where our schedulers were having a hard time filling appointment slots because so many people had already gotten it. On that news, you probably saw also, the news broke overnight that Connecticut is the first state in the nation to vaccinate fifty, more than 50% of its population, with the first dose at least. Bethel is not too far behind that. We're at 47.2% of our adult population with the first dose, and probably higher, because the numbers at the local level lag by a week or two. So we're probably right in there with the state at about the 50% mark and still climbing up. So just wanted to give a shout out to the folks who made that happen, made that possible. Last but not least, the governor began relaxing restrictions on businesses. The first phase started Sun, yeah, Sunday, May 1st, with a later curfew for dining. Also, it's now you can actually order a drink if you want to, as long as the bar is outside. You don't have to be inside. The bars are going to be slowly reopening. But on starting May 19th, almost all of the other restrictions will phase out. And I'm not going to say we feel like we're going back to normal just yet, but it's a big step in that direction. The only edict that will remain after May 19th is the restriction on wearing a mask indoors in public. Last announcement I have is that we are planning to, I'm going to use the word reopen Town Hall. Town Hall has been open, as I have stressed with many people since this pandemic began. The only difference is we ask people to make an appointment. You'll be able to visit Town Hall without an appointment beginning May 19th. We do ask that some departments will still continue to ask for appointments, and that's not because of COVID. That's just because of the tremendous, tremendous surge in the workload that we've seen during this pandemic. Just to give you an idea, today, the Director of the Building Department, Chris Baldwin, told me that they passed the 500 mark for new permits issued just since January 1st. And that is way, way higher than we've ever, that's as big as we've seen in some whole years, in the last couple of years. So the Building Department, Land Use Department, and Health Department are absolutely slammed with workload. They're really doing their best to keep up and doing a fine job of it. But those departments will be issuing some recommended guidelines for certain functions that would still help them out if we could get the population to call for an advanced appointment. But for visiting the town clerk, for stopping to pay taxes, May 19th is the day that that will be done without the need for an advanced appointment. So that's my report for today. I'll open up the floor to my colleagues, Rich and Paul, see if you have any questions, or if you wanted to add anything, any comments tonight.
I just would like to say that, you know, Laura, just it's an outstanding Laura Visseal, what she has done in terms of this vaccination. I've never seen anything, and I've been in this medical industry for too long, but she really, it flowed flawlessly. She did a great job.
Yeah.
Really good.
Yep. Kudos to Laura also for me and, you know, all the people that worked at the Field House. I mean, it was amazing how smoothly everything ran there.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, we have two sets of minutes to approve or to accept. The first will be the special meeting of April 5th, 2021. I'll make that motion that we approve those. That was just setting the date of the referendum, date and time, or the time of the referendum. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 5th, 2021. Second by Paul and Rich, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And next would be approval of the minutes of April 6th, the following day, which is a regular meeting. I'll make that motion. All right, seconded by Rich. Any discussion, any comments? And hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That carries. Now with your consensus, gentlemen, I think I'm just going to skip over to the water replacement project. We'll get this out of the way so we can start our interviews. So this is a water main replacement project. Hey, Dionne, do I have, do I have rights to share my screen?
Yes, you're a co-host.
All right, let me let me minimize this for a minute. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna bring up the letter of recommendation from Wright Pierce. And there we go. So this, as my colleagues know, and for the benefit of our visitors tonight, the Board of Selectmen and the Public Utilities Commission, which are largely the same, there are two extra members on the Public Utilities Commission that are appointed, along with the Board of Selectmen, have been, since 2013, have been undergoing a very aggressive revamp of our entire public water system, the Bethel Public Water Department. As part of that revamp, we have now produced, constructed two storage tanks with a total capacity of a million gallons. We have refurbished two wells. We are in the process of drilling two new wells. We have replaced virtually all of the pumping systems with modernized equipment that can pump in multiple different directions so we can keep the system balanced between east and west. And we have replaced probably at this point over 2,000 yards of water main, of aging water main. What we have in front of us is the upcoming project for 2021. This was approved yesterday by the Public Utilities Commission, so now the Board of Selectmen will need to move this, to approve this, and move it to a public hearing, excuse me, a special town meeting. So the first motion I'm going to put on the floor is to approve the awarding of the contract for the 2021 Water Main Project to Guerrero Construction, which was the low bidder. They came in with a low bid of $749,195. And the roads on that contract will be School Street, Rector Street, Pleasant Street, and Fleetwood Park. And the total amount to be awarded is $796,655, which includes contingency of 5% and legal and administration costs. So my motion is to approve the project as recommended by the PUC in the amount not to exceed 900, excuse me, $796,655. There a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
No? All right, hearing none, I'll try your minds. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. And last, I will put a motion on the floor that we establish the date of a special town meeting to be Tuesday, May 18th, at 6:30 PM in the GP room here at Town Hall, to allow for social distance spacing.
What was the date again, Matt?
Tuesday, May 18th. That would be a half hour before our regular Board of Selectmen meeting.
That's at 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. That's going to be a Zoom meeting?
No, I was anticipating we'd do a in-person meeting. We typically, for something like this, we have, you know, maybe 20 people, 30 people at the most. So I was anticipating a in-person meeting. A Zoom meeting is certainly possible. The logistics get a little bit more complicated, but that can be done, if you would prefer to do it that way.
You had just mentioned you were going to open up Town Hall on the 19th, and it was the 18th. So that's all.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That's okay with me?
Okay. Well, we will still have people check in at the front desk, and the social distancing and mask requirements will still be in effect.
Okay.
So who seconded that?
I'll second it if no one seconded it.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on that?
No.
No, but I have a question after.
Okay, okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. That carries. Okay, what's the question?
Matt, the first motion of approving the, that has to go to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, doesn't it, also, for their approval?
I don't believe so, because this is, this is.
You're right, you're right.
Because that's. No, that's not, gentlemen, that's not correct. If you don't, if you don't get approval by the town, which means the Board of Finance at least guarantees the monies in order to do it, you're not going to get your approval from the state of Connecticut. We've been through this before.
Oh, you mean because of the grant?
The PUC project we've had, where we had to borrow money, or we had to get money, we need to get the approval of the Board of Finance because they need to back it. They need to guarantee it.
Right.
Is this, is this a grant or is this a loan? Do you remember, Marty?
I think it might be a combination of both, but I don't think, I don't think the whole, I mean, even if it's a loan, we still, we still, the town of Bethel, if you remember, for everything else, they've always asked that there be resolution given to them that says that the town of Beth basically is doing it, not just the PUC.
All right.
Is this new different than the tank or anything else?
Okay.
Matt, I think of the, when we did the sewer work, because we weren't borrowing any money, you know, it was coming out of our funds, that we didn't have to do it. But the water, as Marty just mentioned, because we are borrowing the money.
I thought that, I didn't, I thought this was all grant money and PUC money, but I, all right, I stand corrected.
You amend the motion?
Well, I don't know when the.
The Board of Finance is, they have their regular meeting on May 11th.
Oh, okay. All right.
So that would still work.
Okay, then I will amend the motion to add subject to approval of the Board of Finance.
Seconded.
Okay. All right. So with the amended motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries. Now, we are up back to number six, consideration of candidates for the new fire commission. And I want to thank everybody. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so we can see each other. Let me close that out. Close all tabs. So I want to welcome everybody and thank you for your interest. We do have some not too rigorous questions for you folks, and want to thank Tom Galliford and the chiefs for their input on that. So I would like to welcome first DJ Brown. DJ, you're with us, right? I think I saw you in here.
I am here, yes, sir.
There you are. Great. Well, welcome, DJ. Thank you for volunteering. So why don't you start out by just telling us a little bit about your background and experience, and why you want to be on the Fire Commission?
So first, my background is I've been in the fire service for 24 years. Prior to that, my father, growing up, was a career fire lieutenant in the town of Richfield. So I've been around the fire service my whole life. I started as a volunteer in Richfield when I was 17 years old. I volunteered there until I moved here to Bethel in 2005. And I did a very brief stint as a volunteer with the Stony Hill Fire Department, just prior to getting hired as a Danbury Fireman in 2008, where I have since employed. My experience throughout has been, you know, I have attended numerous educational certifications and educational seminars. I've been involved in the union aspect of it, so I have labor relations. I've been involved in the city's Strategic Planning Committee, and been involved in SOP development within the department. I've had several hours, hundreds of hours towards the capacity of acting company officer. And I've been involved also in the committees of establishing new fire apparatus. Also, in the past, I was employed as a full-time heavy equipment mechanic, fire department. I worked for Bruce Taylor Heavy Equipment Repair Company in the town of Brookfield, where we repaired several local fire trucks. So I have a very extensive background in repair on fire trucks and equipment. So that's pretty much it. I lived here in Bethel since 2005, like I said, with my wife and our two children.
Great. Did you say you're a current member of the Danbury Fire Department?
I am, yes.
Yeah, okay, good. What do you think, what qualities make, would you look for in a commission member, if you were in our shoes?
You know, I think it's just, obviously, you want somebody to be involved. I think public safety is super important, and I think Bethel handles it pretty, pretty well. I think they put it at the top of the list, which I appreciate. You know, I think a good commissioner has to have somebody, you know, who's going to, you know, ride the fence, you know, and I know, take aside the two different departments and look at the town as a whole, and what's best for the town of Bethel. And I think that's a very important factor, you know, and I think having some outside experience, you know, I have a good overview of what a town like this might need, and I think that's something that is important.
My third question, actually, I think you've probably covered it. What skills and experience would you bring? Is there anything you wanted to add to your previous answer?
No, I think I, I think I've covered it most. Like I said, I have, you know, a background in, you know, fire apparatus repair, which I think is important when, you know, overseeing, you know, purchasing of fire equipment or repairs that, you know, which has been issues in the town recently. You know, I have been involved in purchasing of new fire equipment in the past, like I said, and, you know, I have also been involved in strategic planning, which is important, you know, because it's important to have a vision of where you want the town's fire departments to go.
What would you say are the top two issues affecting or facing our, or the top issues facing the two fire, volunteer fire companies that we have in town right now?
I think probably one of the biggest issues, which is, I think, a nationwide volunteer fire service emergency would be that, you know, it's probably not as easy as it was back in one point to get volunteers. And I'm sure that, I think Bethel does a great job of doing it, but I think recruitment and retention is a big item. And also, I think, you know, obviously, budgeting, you know, times are tight, and, you know, everybody wants to have the greatest, biggest, the best equipment, but it's important to really hunker down and see what is important and what's needed, and to evaluate, you know, the town and what's best for the town.
Okay, my last question, before I turn it over to my colleague, if they have any others, this will be the trickiest question you guys will face off on. What do you see, what would you anticipate, the evolution of this arrangement with two volunteer companies and a commission over the next, say, five years?
I mean, I would like to see that, you know, together, we could make it, you know, a great working relationship, and that, you know, it could kind of balance out any, any issues that are currently affecting both departments. I think, you know, perhaps the commission, you know, could offset any issues and we could all work together to really bring both departments into a single vision that's best for the town as a whole for the future.
Good. Rich and Paul, do you guys have any other questions that I have?
Just.
Go ahead, Rich.
What type of equipment were you involved in, in the new purchasing?
I was, I've only been involved in, in pumper engines, fire, you know, engines.
So you were involved in specking them and that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
I have one question. You know, part of our fire services, the ambulance and EMT, any experience in there?
Yep, I've been an EMT for, gotta do the math real quick, about 20 years now.
Oh, okay. All right.
Obviously, in Danbury, the fire department is first responder, so we run the medical calls all day long. So I have a pretty extensive background in medical training.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Great. Thank you very much, DJ. Appreciate that.
Matt?
Oh, yeah.
We have to have minority representation. Is it proper to ask the individuals their party affiliation now, or is that something later on?
Well, we already, we already have that, because I had them put.
Oh, you have that? Okay.
They all, when they responded, they told me what that is. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I really want everybody to know that, you know, that your, your party affiliation is not something that determines this thing, that we do have to comply with state law. Unfortunately, I find that law very wrong-headed in many cases. What it says literally is that no representatives on a board can be more than two-thirds of one party. So it artificially forces you to make decisions based on a political affiliation that have nothing to do with the job that you're going to do. So sometimes these things work out just by accident, where we'll pick five people and we'll just have the right balance. And I hope that works out this time, because it's a, it's a situation that I think is, it doesn't serve the public very well in a context like this, because we're not, we're not dealing in politics, we're dealing in public safety and people who want to help out their town, and that really shouldn't matter, you know, what your affiliation is. But, yeah, we do have those records. So when we, so Rich, when we, when we go to make decisions, we'll have to take that into account.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll do it then. Thank you.
Rich, did you have any other questions?
No, I don't think so. I explained it very well.
Great. Well, thank you very much, DJ. You don't have to leave if you, if you want to watch the rest, but if it's dinner time, we understand.
Thanks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your input.
Okay, next, I'd like to welcome Matt Cosgrove. And Matt, you can unmute yourself, and so we'll, we'll kind of start in the same place. Welcome. Glad you're here with us tonight. Thanks for volunteering. So give us a little bit about your background and why you'd like to serve on our, on our new Fire Commission.
Okay. I've lived in Bethel since 1988. I own a few properties in town. I was a volunteer fireman for over 10 years, both the fireman and EMT. I left it because of my career challenges. And today, I run a, two dealerships with about 125 employees, doing about $130 million a year in business, and I run everything soup to nuts. So I have a lot of management experience, a lot of business experience, and a lot of experience dealing with a lot of different people, between customers, employees, employers, and factory representatives. Currently involved in about a $10 million reconstruction job at the store. And I have, I enjoyed my time when I was a fireman. I enjoyed being involved in the community. My wife has been in town since 1957. My kids grew up, went to Bethel schools. My grandchildren are grown up in Bethel. So I'm pretty deeply rooted in town, and I have a very good understanding of the fire department. I was, I was actually president of the fire department at one time for about two years. So very familiar with all the, all the things that go on down there. And I feel I can make very fair and balanced decisions when it comes to what is in the best interest of the people of the town, and also how to protect the level of volunteer commitment that there is and has been for all these years in town. So that's my stick.
What kind of dealerships does that occur at?
I run a BMW and a Mini dealership.
Oh, okay.
And Darian.
Great. In what year, were you a firefighter here in Bethel?
Yeah, here in Bethel from '91 through 2001. I left in July 2001.
Which department?
Downtown.
Okay, great. And what qualities do you think make a good, a good commissioner? What quality skill sets and so on?
A person that can listen and make a fair and balanced judgment call on what they think is, is right, and having the understanding to gather the right amount of information before making a decision.
Gather the facts?
Yep.
Same question. I get to number three, like I did with DJ. It's worded, what skills or experience would you bring? So you've already covered most of that, but is there anything else that you think, you know, that kind of outside of that answer, anything you want to add?
I just, I've always, you know, growing up all my life, all I ever saw was a lot of volunteer work. And I grew up in a little town in Ireland where we had an indoor heated pool in an area where it was unheard of, and it was all done through volunteer work. My father and two other guys put it together, built it, and then they went after government grants to build a bigger indoor pool. And the little town I grew up in had an all-season outdoor running track, an indoor riding center, squash courts. All this stuff was all done by volunteer people. So I understand the power of volunteer work, and I also understand the delicacy of not letting your ego get in the way of the decision-making that can impact the town on a long-term basis.
You know, separately, I think I'd like to talk to you about that pool idea, too.
Yeah, yeah, I know, me too. I got my own at the house, so I don't really worry too much. But yes, it's, it's huge.
Where in Ireland are you from?
In Mayo, over on the West Coast.
Okay, yeah.
About 40 minutes north of Galway.
And what do you think the top issues are affecting our departments, our two volunteer companies here in Bethel?
I think trying to streamline the efficiencies between the two departments, making sure that there's a, a single message of trying to attract volunteers, trying to manage all of the training requirements, trying to make sure that all the equipment is maintained at the same level. And also utilizing equipment, station, stationing equipment in the right way, so that it's, it's, it's used the most efficient way possible.
Okay. And where, how do you see the relationship between our two fire companies and a commission evolving over the next five years? Into the future, or what would you like to see?
Well, to be honest with you, I haven't been. Well, to be honest with you, I haven't been involved in the fire department in a while, but I, I think that, there's always been a mutual respect between the two fire departments and you would always wanna try to make sure that, both were fairly represented when it comes to a voice about anything that had impact on both. So again, it's, uh, lis- listening and, and trying to mediate and make sure that, you're taking everybody's best interest to heart. Just like any business decision.
Rich and Paul, questions?
I, I think, Matt, you answered, you were part of the EMT also?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Um, that was my only question because, uh, you know, like, like I said earlier, uh, fire and EMT go hand in hand here in Bethel.
Yeah, I was actually involved in, when the paramedic contracts came up a few times. I was involved back when, uh, our address Cliff Hurgen was involved.
Oh, okay. That goes back a way.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, to Matt, it, it's, you know, it's impressive that you manage a hundred and twenty-five people, uh, in the business. Can you imagine, manage the volunteers in that same form, you know?
Yeah.
Everybody's got a different opinion.
Yeah, well, I was, I was in the fire department for a while. I was the president for two, about two years. So I, uh, I know exactly how all the behaviors go on and how, all the different personalities. And, uh, you, you just have to, you just have to take a deep breath and just let, let it flow.
Mm-hmm.
You can't, uh, you know, you can't become too opinionated about anything. You gotta be able to work with people.
Uh, any, any mechanic, uh, experience?
No.
No, all right.
No, I just hear all the knowledge, that's all.
All right, well, I, I, I see that, you know, you, how you've managed, uh, the places, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, I've been. I've been in the car business for thirty years.
Right. You, you might not be the actual person to fix it, but you, you have.
I know who to call on the technical side.
Right. All right, thank you. That's all, the only question I have.
All right. Thank you. By the, by the way, we should talk. I, I grew up in Detroit and, uh, on my dad's side of the family, they had an old dealership and, uh, my mother's side of the family, they were all UAW workers, auto workers. So, uh, yeah, we, I got some Detroit blood in me.
Good for you.
All right, thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Questions for us? Yeah, I forgot to ask that of DJ too. He's still here.
What's that?
Uh, did you get, did you have any questions for us that we didn't answer before?
Oh, and I, I, I'm of the assumption that I'll, I'll get a full rundown if, if I'm chosen to be on the, on the, on the commission. So, I'll wait until then to ask all my questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Okay, next, I would like to welcome Paul Parati. Paul, if you'd like to unmute?
How you doing? I'm here.
Great, thanks for joining us tonight and, uh, we'll start out.
Thanks for having me.
We'll, we'll, we'll start at the beginning. Uh, give us a little bit about your background and why you'd like to serve on the fire commission.
Oh, yeah, a little bit about my background. I joined the Danbury Volunteer Department when I was sixteen. Um, ran up to assistant chief in that department, uh, took a bunch of career tests. Got hired in Danbury two thousand eight. Um, also EMT since two thousand eight. And took numerous classes. I also dispatched for DM in Ridgefield. Worked the dispatch in Danbury one before I went civilian. Um, bunch of officer classes, can act as a lieutenant. I've done it quite a bit the last year. Um, also truck driver my whole life, worked for Teamsters for fifteen years and then, uh, drive, drive for Mitchell propane truck on my days off still. Um, I'm the lead instructor for, uh, Brookfield's firefighter, one program and two. And I've probably a couple hundred kids gone through that program. From Bethel, a lot of them from Bethel, Brookfield, the whole area.
Okay. All right, great. Uh, what qualities in your mind make a, make a good commission member?
Uh, fair, um, guys like to see both departments work together. It seems like they are starting to really gel together. Um, the, uh, I see a lot of new members coming through the Fire One program. And, um, you know, budgets are, budgets are tough and to working together and doing the best for the community.
And, uh, is, is there anything, anything other that you haven't already covered in your skills and experience that, uh, you think would bring to bear on this?
Um, just fair, honest, do what's right for the community, um, open-minded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, just the needs of the community.
Uh, in, in your, in your previous experience, did you have any, did you have any involvement with, uh, budgeting or, or apparatus?
Uh, yeah, but I, I had a truck committees, a tanker and an engine. I was on two committees when I was a volunteer in Danbury. Um, went through a whole spec process with that, went out to the factory, um, inspected it, brought it back.
Okay.
Most of it was when I was in the volunteer department.
Yeah.
What, what, what was the other, uh, tr- truck with the tanker and what?
Tanker and an engine. Um, I was on both committees.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
What would you say are the, the top issues affecting, uh, Bethel, Bethel Fire and Stony Hill Fire over the?
Uh, same as, uh, I think DJ hit it on the head with the retention and recruitment. Um, number one and number two has gotta be same thing he said, the budget, you know? Try to not to have duplicate of services, but just work together for the right thing for the community.
All right. And, and where do you see the, uh, the department and the two, the commission and the two departments headed over the next few years?
Um, just working together and, um, try to get the, uh, the right outcome and try to use all our knowledge and help, uh, both departments out.
Okay. Uh, now, I don't know if you might have covered, you're also a qualified EMT right now too, right?
Yes, yeah, we, uh, yeah, it's a requirement in Danbury, so we do a lot of medical.
Okay, so you're not with Danbury Volunteer now, you're a Danbury?
No, as soon as I, uh, went to the crew department.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, uh,
Okay, all right, Paul?
Yeah, uh, just a quick question here, Paul. Uh, you mentioned one thing which caught my mind a little bit here, budgeting. Uh, how, how much input have you had relative to, uh, budgets? You know, you can, you can pick a subject, whether it's, uh, selection of a truck or, or perhaps the supplies for, uh, the fire department or even for the EMT, uh, side, uh, any experience?
Just basically when we were on the truck committee, we had a, uh, a, a dollar amount we could not go over. So we had to, uh, you know, these, these engines are expensive, um, and we had to go line by line on each item.
Did you have to scale down the, the truck from what was originally presented?
We did, we, we scaled it down, but, um, we did what was essential for the, uh, the piece we were getting. So there wasn't a lot of bells and whistles, but these, these trucks are expensive.
Yeah, that, that we do know.
Yes.
The, the, the chrome doesn't matter, that's for sure. Okay, that was my only question, Paul. Thank you for your input.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, Paul, uh, let me ask you about, uh, you know, we've always heard, uh, the age of the trucks. You know, we look at the, the trucks and they look in pristine, uh, condition. But, uh, you know, they, they do rot out from underneath and, and a lot of times, you know, we hear the trucks are, you know, over the age and they need to be replaced. But what's your opinion if the truck is still streetworthy and everything, uh, to get them re-inspected and certified? Do you use, you know, that's for the economy of the town. Do you feel that's a, a good thing to do?
Yeah, I, I actually, I do believe in, uh, like, uh, we've got two, uh, engines in Danbury refurbished and, um, it, it, you'd have to look at everything, look at new, look at refurbbing, seeing what the end, uh, what the end cost is and, and trying to do the best for the community.
Um, I don't know if you know this or not, do you know the amount of volume calls you do in Danbury?
Probably about twelve thousand calls last year.
Twelve thousand calls?
Yeah, it keeps going out. A lot of medical.
I'm just, I'm just trying to compare, you know, the, the amount of calls that you do in Danbury versus the calls we do here in Bethel. So, um, you know, your equipment goes out a lot more, is on the streets a lot more, you know? Um, and, uh, I'd just like, uh, your opinion on, um, you know, sometimes the departments will wanna spec a certain truck. Or what's your feelings on, you know, priorities of some of those things? You know, we can get a, uh, I, I'm just throwing, you can get a Ford or you can get a Cadillac.
Right, yeah, I hear you. You just gotta, um, look at everything, um, you know, spec out everything and kind of meet in the middle and see what, what the needs are.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you, uh, Paul, have you had any, uh, experience with the maintenance side, like to get a feel for any? Uh, is there any such thing as one brand that's actually better than another or, or just, does it just depend on how much wear and tear they get and how well you maintain them?
It's basically how will you maintain them, um, if you have a good maintenance program. And, um, like we, we use our, you know, our trucks go out a lot, but we have our own mechanics and they do a great job. And I mean, I see Bethel's rigs out there. They, they look, they look like they're top of the line.
Thank, great. All right, uh, Paul and Rich, any other questions?
No, that, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for your input.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our, our last interview for tonight, and we will continue this, uh, tomorrow night. But, uh, last interview tonight is, uh, gentleman is quite well-known here in town who has worked with the town on, uh, in many capacities. Bob Trippi, Bob, welcome, and, uh, thanks for joining us tonight. Thanks for volunteering. And you're muted.
You're muted, Bob.
Hey, Dan, do you know how to unmute a, a phone? Because it's, it's not the same as if you're using a computer screen.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm muted. Yeah, that's me. I hear you.
I can, I can, right.
Okay, good.
Okay, you're there. All right, great. Um, okay, same.
I'm here.
Same question, take it from the top. Tell us about your background and, and why you wanna serve on our fire commission.
Well, I've been in Bethel for, uh, forty-eight years. And I think that I feel public safety is really the most, uh, agency in the government. And I, I, I wanna be involved. I have been involved in other committees, as you know. Um, I've been in the construction business for over fifty years and I had my own electrical contracting company, uh, for eighteen years. So I'm very familiar with budgeting, uh, labor relations, uh, equipment maintenance. In my business, I had vans, lifts, um, bucket trucks, things like that. And it was always important to have properly maintained and, um, you know, so they're always in good working order. Um, training was always important to, to me, to make sure you had qualified, uh, technicians working at all times to understand the business and understand safety. And that's about it. I'm semi-retired now, so I have some time too.
Oh, yeah, we'll fix that.
Yeah, okay.
What, uh, what qualities do you think make a, make a good commissioner in, uh, in a situation like this?
Well, I think that, uh, listening and gaining as much information as possible is always the best way to make decisions. So I think that, uh, you have to understand all points of view and, and get as much information as you can. It's the most important thing, always was.
Um, skills and experience, any, anything in particular that you didn't already cover in the first question?
Not that I didn't, I was, I'll tell you this, I was a volunteer, yeah, fireman in Ridgefield, but I, I don't even wanna tell you when that was. So, we, but I think we still had horse-drawn, uh, pumper trucks at the time, so.
I, I was just gonna add, I was gonna say, if it wasn't a horse-drawn truck, it's okay.
Well, that's what I say, but, and I, uh, have in my, in my business with the electric contractor, installed many, uh, fire alarm systems, worked very closely with, uh, fire officials in many towns and municipalities and with the state.
All right. And, uh, what, what do you say the, what would you say are the top issues facing our departments in terms of?
Well, I tell you, I, I really, really would, really don't know. I want, that's what I, I wanna be able to find out what's really going on and make, uh, educated decisions. Um, you know, thank God I haven't been able to, I haven't had to call the fire department in, uh, in many, many, many years. So, um, I have to educate myself on what, what the, uh, departments feel like now.
All right. And, uh, I, I, how do you see, uh, the, these two, the commission and the two volunteer companies evolving and, uh, and growing over the next few years?
Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you. I, I have to find out what's, I have to dig into it and get the information myself to make an educated decision.
Okay, no, fair enough. Um, well, let me go back to, uh, okay, so granted, your, your fire experience with Ridgefield was brief, but, uh,
Brief, very brief.
Did, did you have EMT training as part of that too? Okay.
No.
Um, I'll start with Rich this time. Rich, do you have any questions for Bob?
Well, the same that I asked, um, Paul, um, um, about the new trucks, you know, yeah, sometimes the departments, uh, you know, want the cream of the crop or the Cadillac, and sometimes we have to, you know, maybe settle for the Chevy or something in between as a Ford. And I'm just throwing those names out, the fire trucks are a lot different. Uh, I don't name of some of them anymore, but, um, what's your feeling on, on those issues? Just because, uh, one of the departments thinks that, uh, the, the Cadillac is the best and another department thinks the Ford is the best, uh, you know, how are you gonna resolve something like that?
Well, I think that they have to prove how, why the performance is better on a, on a, uh, Cadillac than a, than a Ford. What's, what's the difference? I tell you, with my business, years ago, I used to buy lots of vans. And I would buy used, uh, Snet vehicles. Snet at the time was, you know, you know, and, uh, if you properly maintain them, if they've, and they're fully functional, I used to, they worked, they worked fine. Yeah, again, maintenance is a, is a key issue.
Hey, hey, Bob, you're really dating yourself now.
I, I know that, please, I know, like, you know, I feel older every day.
All right, uh, then the other, the other thing, well, you, you know, you just spoke to that a little bit. About the, you know, a lot of times we hear the age of the trucks are, you know, over the, the limit of, of, uh, recommended use. But, you know, they look fine and as long as they're working fine, you know, I, I think, you know, we should keep them a bit longer. So, you know.
If, if, if they're functioning and then they're safe, I, I don't understand why.
Exactly.
There, you need something new.
Right, all right, so, but that, that's a, you know, sometimes, uh, the department might come in and say, oh, well, we need this. And, you know, it's, it's hard to sell a million dollar or a million and a half dollar pumper ladder truck to the public sometimes, you know, so.
Well, you know, I, I think they have to prove, uh, why it's not, why it's, has to be replaced. What is it functionally wrong? Not, not because the manufacturer recommends that after thirty years you have to get a new one.
Right, okay. That's, that's what I like to hear, thank you.
All right, uh, Paul, question?
Yeah, hey, Bob, from one old guy to another old guy here. Uh, you know, you, you've been involved in the electrical side a, a, as well as construction side. I'm, I'm sure that, you know, your experience relative to budgeting, and when it comes to budgeting, um, just give us a little bit of insight, especially about, uh, not only, uh, on the larger capital items, but perhaps on the smaller items, uh, you know, like when, uh, we have to buy uh, equipment for the fire stations themselves. Have you got a lot of experience in that, especially with your two companies?
I do, you know, when you, when you're budgeting, you should know beforehand what you're, what thing you're gonna be requiring for that year or that, that, uh, time period. So if you budget it properly, you should have the, the funding available to meet those needs. Again, you know, it's, you, you have. to meet those needs. Again, you know, it's, you, you have to prepare budgets based on what you think you're gonna need the coming year. And that was always, that was a strength. I never, I really never got in trouble in my own business because I didn't budget properly.
Let, let me expand upon that a little bit more, so.
Sure.
Uh, one, one of my, my, uh, criteria always is in any management position is, you know, it's not today, it's what we look forward to going down the road. You know, whether it's three years, five years, ten years. Have you had that opportunity when you were in construction to do that relative, especially for your own company, electrical company?
Absolutely, you know, you, you, uh, you have a feeling of, uh, how a, a piece of equipment is gonna depreciate over the, uh, over the coming years and you have to budget for those, uh, those depreciation contingencies.
Okay, all right, and my last question is, uh, being a, a, like, like me, a, a forty-year-plus resident, uh, just taking a look, uh, how the fire department has grown here in Bethel. Where do you see us going forward? You know, uh, the, the issue that I've always had and I'm sure, uh, our chiefs will say, about, uh, back me up on this. Volunteers are always a problem. How do we help out the volunteers? Because if we would have a full-time fire department, that would be expensive, probably as expensive, if not more so than what we have with the, uh, police department.
How do you get, well?
How do you maintain these volunteers now?
How, how are we marketing the department to, to get volunteers? Are we just saying, hey, we need volunteers or are we showing them how they're gonna be helping the community or what they're gonna be, you know, how they're gonna be, uh, used in the community? That, I think that, again, I have to get involved with that, but that's, I never.
You're, you're, you're saying to me, basically, it's a marketing issue, which, you know, I, I haven't heard before, which is a good point.
I have never, I have ne- honestly, I've never heard anything about becoming a volunteer for the Bethel Fire Department.
Okay, thank you for that, Bob.
No problem.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Yeah, I have another one for Bob. Just on those lines, uh, you know, capo, for capital expenditures, you know, with, through the Board of Selectmen, uh, budget time and we, you know, we try to plan out, you know, five years in advance of, uh, some of our capital expenditures, so, uh, I think that's something that we're really looking for the fire to, commission to take on and present to the Board of Selectmen so we can kind of budget things in the future like that, so.
It makes a lot of sense.
I think that would be a big, uh, top priority for, and I mentioned, I should have mentioned that to the other candidates too, but.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yep, all right, thank you, Bob.
I could, I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, can I go get my cocktail now?
Yeah, we'll adjourn in about two minutes.
What's your address down there?
I'll pull this below, by the way, Rich.
Okay. Stay low back, please.
All right, so, uh, no further questions, guys, right?
No.
All right, well, listen, uh, uh, DJ, Matt, Paul and, and Bob, uh, thank you for joining us. Uh, thank you to the Chiefs, to Tom Galliford, Kenny. Uh, who else we have on here? John Baker's on the line, I see. I, I don't see him, I see his name. So thank you very much. Uh, we will pick this up again at, Deon, I think we're on for seven o'clock tomorrow night again, right? And, uh, there, it's gonna be a little bit longer night, but we don't have any other business to transact. There's a few names that are not on the, on the schedule, but they will be added tomorrow night, so, uh, I hope at this point entertain a motion to adjourn.
Already had a question.
No, is Phil the clerk? Is he here?
Um, he, he is here, but, um, he isn't, he's an active member of a department, which is, which is, so, so he is withdrawn, but I, I want to thank Ernie for, for volunteering. And thank you for your service to our department, Ernie. We, we do appreciate that. Uh, maybe, maybe at some point in the future, when you go to inactive status, you can join one of these fun committees and get involved in this wonderful world of politics that we're in. But, uh, thank you very much for, for the work that you do for our department. So at this point, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second, those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, see everybody tomorrow night.
Yep, thank you, thank you again for all of our volunteers for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.